Go forward with this recommendation. I just want to be clear that we're looking at a three and a half to four million dollar project in today's dollars. If we're going to phase this over time, it's probably going to be something more than that, but there's no way we can afford to, obviously, to foot the bill up front. But as long as we have a plan and engage it, we should be able to plan it and bring this neighborhood up to a standard that's acceptable to Punta Gorda and to the neighborhood. And so I think we have to go forward. I just want the dollars to be reemphasized, if you will.
I agree with Gary. I think the thing that's most important of all of this is that the safety of our citizens is paramount, and I think that's the top priority that we should be looking at whenever it comes to anything we decide. I think the safety and security of our citizens, being here in our community, that's got to be our top priority all the way around. So let's do whatever it takes to get this done so that everyone on all parts of the town are equally safe and secure.
Well, we need to understand that in the downtown areas, historic area, downtown area, more people want sidewalks. You go into the aisles, I mean, we've had experience where we, as a staff, we may have take a look at some sidewalks, the neighborhood doesn't want them.
Mm-hmm.
So there are differences.
Yes.
I mean, this is, I mean, what we are doing, we are reunifying the historic district in, so.
That's right.
We just need to make sure that it's consistent through the district.
The historic area.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And you're not talking apples and apples because in the PGI area, you have basically cul-de-sacs or sequestered small little areas with low traffic. So for, to have a sidewalk on my street, I don't want it, well, number one, but number two, it's not really particularly relevant where at the end of a cul-de-sac, we have very low traffic. If you're talking about Marion and Olympia, it's a different story, but, you know, the main thoroughfares. But in the neighborhoods, we have very low. In this particular neighborhood, you have through traffic on virtually every street at one point or another.
Mm-hmm.
It's connected.
We've had experience on heavily traveled roads in PGI and BSI where they don't want sidewalks.
Right. It's very true, and people are having to duck the traffic, and yet the residents saying no sidewalks.
It's different.
Yeah. Okay.
Is the Virginia extension in this 1% sales tax program or not? It's unfunded.
I believe it's currently funded for next fiscal year, is it not?
It's just part of it now. When you talk about, it's just part of it, by the Ice House area.
Yeah.
We don't go, no, we don't go all the way to Cooper.
Well, I think when we look at that again, we need to look at extending it all the way down.
What, I think what Howard is referencing is a situation we had back in 2014 where we.
Macedonia.
Macedonia, where we actually approved a sidewalk as a part of the local option sales tax.
Yeah.
And then the residents said, no, 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 no.
Maybe the residents didn't say that.
Yes, they did.
No, maybe the residents didn't say that. You understand what I'm saying? Maybe the residents' representatives said that, but not the residents.
No.
No, I have the data. I have a spreadsheet. I have a spreadsheet with every single resident who opined that they do not want sidewalks. I kept track of it, and it was, so.
Well, residents have stated they want sidewalks now.
No.
No, she was talking on Macedonia.
I'm talking about Macedonia.
Oh, that Macedonia.
Yeah.
No, no, Macedonia Drive and the Bird Store aisles.
I apologize.
Okay.
My brain.
Anyways, we're talking about the historic district.
Yeah, so what Howard's referencing is, is where in other parts of the city where we have thought it would be a good idea because these are actually feeder streets.
Right.
The residents that live on those feeder streets have said no.
Oh, but we're saying in this particular project, which we're talking about, the residents said they wanted, that's what I was referring to.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
So let's move on, because then I want to ask a couple of questions. We need a motion to?
Yes, a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engage a consulting engineer to design a phased project for the historic district.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. I don't know when the time should be, but I think we need to look at our impact fees again. Do we have any pots of impact fees that can pay for lighting? And I'm just, this is why I bring this up, because talking about Harborview Road and the Sunseeker Resort and the traffic that that's going to bring here, knowing that the county is only collecting 40% of what their normal impact fee would be, and that if Sunseeker gets going now, those will be the rules that they'll be building under. Those monies collected would be able to pay for a Harborview Road project instead of having to go through the FDOT. And so I just don't want the city to get behind the ball. I would like to see, I don't know if we can include lighting in our, I know we have parks, we kept that intact, roads, but can that include lighting and sidewalks?
If it's all part of a road project.
But it wouldn't be, like this Virginia, Virginia would not be, Virginia Avenue would not be a road project per se, it's just a murt, or what are we calling that?
Well, it is a pro, trial, it is, it's considered by FDOT to be alternate transportation, so.
Does that fly for our impact fees?
If you want to look at impact fees again, we would go out and hire an impact fee consultant to do a study once again.
I mean, we have the numbers, we just.
No, we don't know if those numbers are.
Are still valid.
Yes.
I think it's got to be sooner than later, because all the improvements that we do on the east side, we're doing that to encourage new development and new building, whether it be residential or commercial. So I'm just saying that, you know, in the past, we've relaxed, just like Lee County, Charlotte County, everybody relaxed their impact fees to try to promote development. Well, now, we're spending the funds, because we really didn't collect the, those monies to do those projects, so I think we need to look at it sooner than later. And I know, I know Lee County has an EMS impact fee. I mean, there's a lot of things that other places have that we don't have, that we, we have at our milage rate, we all talk about that every year during our budget, but I think it's, it should be sooner than later that we look at reinstating impact fees for the things that people want in their town, like lighting, like sidewalks, like parks, like nice roads. I just feel like now is the time, because if we wait, we're going to have to use, like we're talking now, we don't, this is all unfunded, what we just passed. Yes.
I'm not arguing with anything you're saying, but I think we also have to keep in mind, from a developer's point of view, I'm just going to put this perspective, the way we collect the impact fee, if we're going to, impact fees, if they're going to be an upfront cost, that can impact the developer greater than if it's spread out over, say, a five-year period. I'm not saying to give a reduction in the impact fee for that developer, anything of that sort, but to also take in mind a payment schedule for that impact fee, so it's not necessarily on, right up front, but over a reasonably prudent time, so that the monies do come in, but they also don't inhibit that developer initially from his.
That would be fine, but I'm also talking residential, because, you know.
I'm talking residential, too.
Okay, good, all right.
I mean, I don't care whether it's an apartment building, or whether it's a building that's going to put up five or 10 houses, or anything like that, whether it's commercial, residential, apartment, or residential individual. I just think that sometimes if, you know, for a larger developer, somebody that's putting up multiple buildings, that could be a factor that could be tempered without necessarily forgiving, if we schedule the way the impact fee is.
And I think our argument could be, too, that we are working on the infrastructure, and those funds will go back into the pot, so we can keep improving our city for people to want to do those kind of developments here.
Have we recently, what action did we, we recently took action, if someone did mixed use with residential added, did they could spread it for five years?
It's the multifamily housing.
Multifamily, all right.
So do you want us to seek a firm, there, we got, there's a few out there that do impact fee studies in Florida to update our impact fee and bring you back recommendations?
I mean, if that's definitely the first step, then I think.
That is the first step.
And I would like, I would like to see what the other, around us, what other types of impact fees are out there that we could look at instituting.
They would do that.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with it. I think the time is now.
Yeah, I think so. Yes, I'm making most.
So I moved that we, I moved that we hire a consultant to investigate how we should prudently initiate impact fees in the future, and how they also are, we are set around with our, our neighbor, neighborhood communities on how they're leveraging their impact fees.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm.
You got a vote, yes or no?
Yeah, that's fine, I'm okay with it.
Okay, unanimous.
Well, we're going to bring you back the ranking and.
Right. I have no problem taking a look at it.
Definitive commitment, yeah.
I mean, we're not committing to anything.
We're not committing to anything.
We're just looking at it.
We're looking at it.
Okay, we'll put an RFP out there.
I mean, the only thing we're committing to is using staff time to go put an RFP out and bring it back.
Right, that's right.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. We have continued discussion of building height in the city center zoning district. Can you just, can you just take a moment and couch this in a way that's understandable to say the reason why there aren't any details as far as the numbers, because this is still a discussion? Can you just speak to that for, since we had some citizens comment on that?
I think our presenter will speak directly to it.
Okay.
For the record, Mitchell Austin Urban Design, yes, directly in reference to building height, we have been discussing building height for about a year and a half now, and we're still in the generalization phase, because City Council has not directed staff to actually draft an ordinance. And we're taking the temperature of the elected officials, as well as the public and business community, in terms of what is the, what is the appetite for changing the existing regulations? And there's definitely been strong interest in changing the existing regulations, because they don't appear to be working, because we keep getting these variance applications, which I think the city attorney has very eloquently put, is probably not the best way to do that, from a legal perspective. So in terms of building height, we know that our quaint little downtown has very little in terms of building height. And what people think when we talk about building, changing the building height is something like this, which, that's not downtown Punta Gorda, that's downtown Fort Myers, and those are 300-plus-foot tall skyscrapers. We don't want that. Punta Gorda isn't that today, and Punta Gorda probably would never be that, even if we changed the building height to allow 300-feet tall buildings, there's no market for it. But we definitely don't want that in our community. It's not appropriate. In terms of talking about building height, we are talking about the city center zoning district. That is the area highlighted in purple on this map. It is a very discreet portion of the city, probably, I don't have the figure off the top of my head, but around 100 acres of land. Most of it is actually already developed with buildings. In terms of existing building heights, we have a mix of one-to-five-story buildings in the downtown already. What is currently permissible under code is 50-foot-tall buildings everywhere. So the Sunloft Center, that is legally permissible. You could, you could build that on any lot in Punta Gorda right now, today, in the city center zoning district. In terms of the, the city center zoning district, realistically, redevelopment is hard. If you want to redevelop a property that already has an existing building on it, you have to make the financial justification to throw away that existing building. So that, that's a very difficult financial proposition. Any developer will tell you, will have a much more eloquent explanation of that than I could. So realistically, we're looking at the vacant lots that exist within the city. In terms of granting entitlement, in terms of granting building height above some baseline number, we're really looking at the large lots, the large parcels. So highlighted in pink on this map, those are the existing large vacant parcels that are left in our downtown. It's really a handful of parcels. Now, could one assemble a collection of parcels with, that are vacant, or that have, you know, existing small buildings on them, and demolish them, and assemble those lots together and create one large parcel? Certainly. But as any developer will tell you, or Charlotte County can tell you from direct experience, it's incredibly expensive, difficult, and time-consuming to assemble a large number of lots meticulously. As I was mentioning, we have, we have discussed building height at a significant number of meetings, both in public forums, like City Council and Planning Commission, and at community events in terms of stakeholder meetings, Team Punta Gorda Annual Meeting, and multiple meetings with the Chambers of Commerce, regarding building heights over the past two years, almost two years. From an urban design perspective, our primary concern in, as it relates to building height is about the pedestrian experience. How does, how do we, as, as residents, visitors of our fair city, how will we experience the street? And most of the street experience for us has to do with what happens on the street, so traffic volume, traffic speed, vehicular, our separation from those vehicles, what happens at the ground floor of the buildings? Are there plenty of windows and doors? Is there lots of architectural detail? And on the sidewalk, do we have lighting? Do we have street trees? Do we have other amenities? We do pretty well in Punta Gorda on all of those things. We have fairly low-volume streets with fairly low vol, fairly low vehicular speeds. We've got a lot of parallel parking for giving us a good physical separation from those moving vehicles. Our architectural provisions are fairly stout, especially at the ground level in terms of window and door fenestrations. What we don't do very well with is our sidewalk infrastructure is very narrow. Our streets were platted in the 1880s, they were platted at one chain wide, 66 feet. 66 feet is pretty generous when you're only dealing with horses and carriages, but when you start dealing with multiple lanes of vehicular traffic, 66 feet gets really narrow really quick. So there's not a lot of space left over for us, for the pedestrians walking down the street, shopping in the shops, and dining in the restaurants. So there's definitely room for improvement in our street network in terms of enhancing the pedestrian experience in the downtown. So in terms of this, we looked at trading, height, for setback, and other provisions. So currently, if you want to build a four-story building in the downtown, you can pretty much do that by right, within that 50-foot height limit. Can be technically challenging because of the modern construction methodology, we think, oh, a story is 10 feet. Well, a story is really 12, 14, because of building height and structural systems. At any rate, a five-story building is more or less outside the parameters of being able to be built under that 50-foot height limit. So at a five-story building, if they want to get to the fifth floor, give us an additional setback, make the sidewalk space wider, give us more public space, and you get the additional entitlement of being able to go up an extra floor. At six stories, you could create a canyon effect on our little narrow 66-foot-wide streets. So we say, in addition to the setback, give us a step back. So at the street level, I'm not seeing those top stories, really, I'm only seeing the first two or three floors of the building. So we're adding, not only the setback, we're saying, hey, add a canopy so that we get some rain and sun protection for our sidewalk that you've providing, and then a step back, which gives us more sunlight on the street, limits that canyon effect of the buildings. We also looked at the possibility of adding a seventh story. So they would still be looking at the same provisions of the step back and the setback, but going back to the actual site itself, they said, hey, give us some more additional open space. And that would be 5% of the total lot area, and that space could be public or semi-public, depending on the building type. Certainly, if it was residential, you, you would probably see it as semi-public space for that building, but. So we looked at an example project site, and I'm picking this one because that's the one of most interest, but certainly this would apply to any building site in the city. The 100 block of West Marion Avenue, AKA City Marketplace, it's approximately 3.6 acres, it has four street frontages. The one oddity of this site is that, right here at the bottom, on West Marion Avenue, the city has a 20-foot-wide strip of land that is reserved right of way. So that 20-foot wide strip of land is ours, and no developer can build on it unless City Council decided to give it to them, or sell it to them. So currently, under the code, as it exists today, there's a zero-foot street yard, street front setback, and a 50-foot height limit, and you get 10 additional feet for non-habitable space above that. So in essence, you could get a 64, 65-foot-tall building when measured from the existing sidewalk. And the building footprint would look something like that, lot line to lot line, all the way around, about the same height as the Sunloft Center. So what the conceptual proposal suggests is that for a five-story building, and to make this development site work at the prices that they're looking to charge for it, you want to maximize the development potential. So they're probably, we'll never see a proposal on this site for a four-story building. Either we'll see development proposals for a one-story building, or a many-more-story building than that. We're looking at a 10-foot setback, and that would be measured from all street fronts. So essentially, you would, you would have a green strip around the, well, it would be sidewalk infrastructure, but a greener strip around the building of a 10-foot setback all the way around the three sides of the building, four sides of the building, excuse In terms of the step back, if they wanted to go to a six-story building, the highest part of the building would be stepped back from the street, you're looking at 20 feet away from the property lines, for those tallest stories. In terms of 5% of the open space, again, you have the building footprint, there are many options they could do. They could choose to put all of that space that they were required to grant, which is approximately, on this site, 1.1 acres. They could put it all on one side, so you would have a wider street yard. If you look at this scenario, that would be, make Taylor Road, Taylor Street, excuse me, roughly the same sort of setbacks as you would see on Marion Avenue, so that would be a nice look. And then push the building closer towards the more heavily-traveled street of 41 North They could split it up into two side yards, so you'd add 10 feet to either side. You could do a forecourt, where you're basically adding grand plaza space to one of the primary facades of the building. And probably one of the least desirable scenarios in this particular block would be an interior courtyard. Still wouldn't be a bad building, especially if that courtyard is connected to, and becomes public space, but that, for me, would be the least preferred scenario. So that's really all I have for today. What we have basically asking for at this point is direction, as to whether we need to pursue drafting an ordinance, or we need to do other work before we get to that point.
Do you have anything you want to chime in with, if it is time?
No.
Okay, yeah.
What we really need in order to, if you want us to move forward, we really need from the council, so that we can put the actual regulations within a draft ordinance, what height are you acceptable with? So we can work our way back, because right now, if you wanted to go, let's say, seven stories, and you wanted to have high floors, I mean, you could have, you know, each, let's take a 20-foot floor, I know that's kind of high, but you could, that's 140 feet. That's not what we're proposing. But we need to have some kind of, of direction, as to what height are you willing to consider, so that we can take that and actually put it in our regulations.
So Mitchell, the, the top height of the event center, what is the top of that?
I believe the event center is actually at the, well, they may be in that 60-foot range, because it's non-habitable space up there, there's no floor.
Oh, okay, so that, all right, and then the Justice Center?
The Justice Center, the habitable space is around 70 feet, the top of the tower is 112, or 117.
So you're saying the non-habitable could be the cupola things, or the elevator shaft, and that type of? What else would be in non-habitable? Architectural?
Architectural features, certainly, so decorative roof structures, towers. We could write that section to be more specific, so you could have a certain height allowance for those features of the building that are absolutely required, like HVAC systems and elevators, which do have to protrude above the roof to work in a multi-story building. And then a separate allowance in height for purely architectural details and features. One of the concerns that was brought up early in this process was the fact that we don't want the whole city to be flat at one level, that something, just like the tower on the Justice, Justice Center, punctuating the skyline makes a signature feature. So we may want to consider that. But in terms of how many stories we get, we definitely need to know how many feet you're comfortable with, so that we can say, okay, well, realistically, if you're only comfortable with 55 feet, we're going to have four-story buildings.
Jahad, then we'll go to Lynn.
First of all, just, and I'm not saying to go here, but understanding in our history, buildings have gone to 104 feet, like the Charlotte Harbor, I mean, the Punta Gorda Hotel. Regarding this, I've talked to realtors who know the prices of our land as they actually are right now, and they asked for what that number would be, and they said between, between 75 and 90 feet. And me personally, I think like 79 feet is a good number, because it could allow for a good six, possibly seven-story building. Regarding this, I, I think we have to preface the importance of our commercial sector, and the fact that we're in a very vulnerable place, because we don't have one for, and a lot of our residents who've moved in the last 20 years don't understand, Punta Gorda always had a strong commercial sector, though we don't have one now, and that having our goal of 25% commercial to residential mix is really essential for our sustainability. And on this note, and not, you don't have to be as ambitious as this, but like this weekend, I actually had, I was, I had dinner with the mayor of Altamont Springs and her husband. Altamont Springs has 50/50. They have, their city has no debt whatsoever, they pay for all the capital improvement projects cash, they do not borrow money at all, and they have robust services like we do. The point being is that a city can only afford to be able to not raise taxes, provide good services, if it has good commercial infrastructure. And their milage rate is, is just 3.1. Boy, I mean, I, I think that we have experts here in urban design, they're giving, this is, they know how to do this. They know how to do the setbacks, know how to do the light, the wind. They're not going to give us anything which is not going to look good for the city, that is, our people don't do that. And I think that we, I should trust them in their advice on this. And, and with this said, to, to end this, I lived in the fastening district in Tokyo, where, like you said, all your eyes are directed, street line. I can tell you honestly, I did not know how high any buildings were because of the architecture. I can tell you honestly, I did not know how high any buildings were because of the architecture. likelihood they weren't skyscrapers, but I didn't know, because good architecture is good architecture, and I think that we have a good team that's going, that's giving us very good advice, and I personally have seen this in effect, and I know that this, this will only enhance our skyline and enhance our abilities as cities to be sustainable.
Thank you. Lynn?
I'll first start by saying I am in favor of doing some changes to our height restriction. However, I don't know why we are so focused on the number of stories. We've never, ever focused on the number of stories on a building before. Everything has always been based on the elevation by height, and I think we need to stay with that and let a developer figure out how many stories he wants his building to be, because quite frankly, telling somebody that they have a maximum six stories or seven stories, every story can possibly be as tall as 18 or 20 feet tall. So you're talking about 120-foot tall building for a six or seven-story building, once they add all the appurtenances on top of the building. I, I am in favor of moving forward with doing an ordinance as long as it's based on the number of feet, and then let the developer establish how he wants to build that building and how many stories he wants it to be. I brought with me a picture of the rendering that the original City Marketplace building that was approved by City Council back in 2005 and '06, and this was only going to be a six-story building at the highest point, and this was totally acceptable to that developer. This was something that everyone in the city went along with. They approved it. They liked it. Planning Commission approved it unanimously. It was, we pushed it through, and then, of course, the project fell apart. But my point is, this was based on the same concept that Mitchell is proposing with the stepbacks and all of that, and I, and I like that idea, but I'm just not in favor of going with the uniform, six stories or seven stories kind of a change. I think we need to really be aware of the fact that this is not that kind of a town, and respectfully, it is not Tokyo. It is not Altamont Springs, which is on the side of Orlando. It is not that kind of a town. We need to find developers who are willing to come to our city and build something that's compatible with our downtown.
Can you put that picture on the Elmo? Not, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you put that picture so we can see it? Thank you, Lynn.
I mean, to, to what you're saying, I guess your comments are confusing me, because if we just change the height alone, they, they will not have to give the concessions. They will just be able to build the building if we say, okay, 70 feet is now the number. I mean, I think you missed the technical aspects of what Mitchell was trying to propose is that that's how we get those things if we change it. That's how we will get those things that, and we've already heard that the variance process is not the way to go about it. So I think what Mitchell has done is try to take what you're saying and make it doable. And he's asking us right now, what is, what is your, there's still going to be a height limit.
Right.
There's still going to be a height limit, but if we don't put the verbiage in, like he was just saying about the mandatory appurtenances and architectural appurtenances, then they don't have to do any of that. They can just...
I'm not suggesting we don't do that.
Okay, because that, okay.
I'm suggesting that we base, we base the building on the, the feet above flood elevation, not the number of stories. The developer can establish how many stories he wants within that, within that height.
Yeah, but he's saying if we do the stories, then for the additional story within the height, that's how you get the amenities that we're, that, that we're saying are...
The reason we have to do a height is that if we're basically limiting, let's say, stories to 10 or 12 feet, he then can work backwards. What we have to have is a maximum height that's good for us, then he'll work backwards, and that's the number of stories we're going to be able to have.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's what Lynn is saying.
Yes. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Lynn, I agree with you. And I just want to put a couple little arithmetic points out here. If someone were to build a six-story house averaging 12 feet, it would be 72 feet tall, plus a little bit more. If he were to make 14-foot stories, it would be 84 feet.
Right.
Okay? On the other hand, as long, my biggest concern is, is I want to see this architectural feature and setback feature set in. I don't want to see another sunblock personally. That's, that's my motivation. Now, I really don't care if he builds a beautiful architectural building with the proper setbacks, et cetera, if he builds a 72-foot, one-story building.
They can do that, too.
It's not going to do that.
That's right.
Okay. But he might, as an architectural feature, have some type of atrium type of structure that has a 50-foot ceiling in it, and he would certainly be able to do that, as long as he met the setback criteria and the architectural features that I think our, our urban design people, as Jaha was saying, they have that concept. That's their business. They understand it. They haven't failed us yet. So I think all we, I think we should, should stop talking about stories. I think that was a unfortunate verbiage that we put in, you know, when we said seven stories, nine stories. We're just throwing that out. I don't think everybody, anybody meant that in a quantitative manner, that we want to have nine-story buildings. We want to have 80-foot buildings, max. That's what we want, or 1, or 70-foot, whatever we're going to decide, but we, I think I'm getting the senses, we understand that it needs to be greater than 50 feet or 60 feet.
The only thing is with him, there has to be, he's, for him to be able to acquire these features, ultimately, we're going to have to have a height, and we're going to have to basically say, probably from after the first story, a maximum foot per story.
Exactly.
Because ultimately, it's going to be stories.
That's, 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 that's the, but that's the architectural feature you would talk, that, okay.
We're not taking audience participation right now.
That would be, that would, that would be for them to devise. As he shows with the setbacks, he's basically showing two or three stories and a setback, two or three stories and a setback. And you see this, if you ever get a chance to go to Boulder, Colorado, on the, the end, the modern part of Pearl Street, that's exactly what it is. And those setbacks start at the, at the, there's a high first floor, which is the commercial aspect of it, and then the residential's each have their own little porch and plateau, and each one is set back a little bit more, and it's, and it's really, it's quite, quite elegant, and it fits with the old architecture of Pearl Street as well as with the mountains in the background. Now, correct that we don't have the mountains in the background, okay? But the point is, is that tiering that, that's being presented to us, and, and whatever that formula needs to be, that's what I think we need to direct our urban design people to say, okay, let's set it 70 feet or whatever that is, and then have them come back to us with the way to architecturally tier it and, and the accoutrements so that we can write that code and go forward.
Exactly.
In other words, from our perspective, we want to keep the KISS principle with one or two S's. Okay? Hopefully, we just have to go with the first, the first S, and we don't have to add the second S. But that's really, if I get, get into senses, and that's what Howard's asking for, that's what urban design is asking for, is just for us to say, okay, 84 feet, whatever that number is, a consensus among ourselves, what we can support, and then they will put these rules together so we don't have to keep talking about this for another two years. Does that make sense, Howard? What I just said? We want a height, that we want a height. So I'll open up the discussion and say, look, if we go sixth floor, average at 14 height would be 84 feet. If it was five foot at 14 foot, it would be 70 feet. I would say that we go right around that 84-foot level would be the max. That would be a, basically a 92-foot with all the accoutrements on the top of it.
Too much.
That's just to start the discussion. You can all disagree with me. I won't be offended.
This is, this has been discussed for a long time. Residents talked about this back in 2005 when the Citizens' Master Plan was created. We, as a, a group of residents, went to Delray Beach and, working with Jaime Correa, saw what they had done. The stepbacks start before the third floor. They actually start at the first floor. They start, in some buildings, some buildings, they start at the second floor. There's a, quite a variety, and they keep stepping back.
So it talks about floors? Is that the verbiage?
Well, there, I'm talking about floors as far as how a building is designed. I'm not talking about the total maximum height.
Oh, I know, but the verbiage is floors.
Floors, stepping back the floors.
Okay.
Okay? To prevent the canyon effect, as Mitchell was talking about. And in some cases, you don't realize how tall a building is because it's been stepped back so many times, and it's, I think, the, the diet, the, the picture that Mr. Kilwell demonstrated was really great as far as it shows the contrast between what could possibly be across from a one-story building. And so it brings, even though we try as best that we, to put numbers and, and parameters in place, I've heard from quite a few people, we heard some people, some talking today, I realize this is not what you want, but that we need to still maintain some type of oversight on what gets done so that we can say, mm, this doesn't look right, and the council needs to maintain control. And so, you know, I, I hear this discussion, and we want to, you know, try to codify something, but it's how do we do that and yet still maintain the oversight so that we know that what we're, we're protecting the, the historic character of this community and not just allowing a developer to just go forward and do whatever they want. And, and I think right now, there's a sensitivity in our community, as much as we might like to talk about this today, there's a sensitivity of what's going on in this community. People have said, we see increased traffic in our community right now, that we've got this proposal across the, the harbor, and so I'm getting a lot of input from people that are just feeling overwhelmed, and now all of a sudden, we're going to talk about this, and so people are going...
It's not all of the sudden.
Well, it's all kind of converging at the same time.
Okay, that I would agree with, that not all of the sudden.
No, I, I, we've talked about this for numerous years, but with all these other factors that are at play, it's, it's really asking us to really, really think hard and, about what we do.
And I think we need to think about the fact, too, pretty much we've already decided the 50-foot box is not what we want.
I agree with that.
So we're trying to work from that to get to something that's workable. Now, we've heard from you several times, case by case basis, and a variance process...
The problem with the variance process is that in order to be entitled to the relief that the variance process gives, you have to demonstrate, and I'm talking about a classic variance process, you have to demonstrate that there's hardship, and, and the hardship in every case is self-created because you've decided to violate the standards. That's not to say we can't create a, a process that gives you discretion via, let's say, a special exception-type process. And I'm, I'm just going to throw out numbers, not for any other reason than just for example. We, I think we heard historically, the highest building is 104 feet. We heard that 84 might be the desirable limit. Let's just use those numbers for discussion purposes. If we set as a maximum limit by right, 84 feet, and in that 84-foot maximum height by right, we also have set, step back requirements, for every 20 feet, you have to step in 10 feet or whatever, whatever it turns out to be. But then we also have the opportunity that if the developer can demonstrate whatever criteria we establish, to come forward for you that would provide some degree of discretion, we might be able to entitle that developer to build with your permission, an additional 20 feet up to the 104 feet, as long as, based on the, where that building is to be located, what other things that they might do to ameliorate the impacts, you know, more or less the special exception-type process that has certain criteria involved, but ultimately, you have to decide whether or not it's in, in the best interest of the, of the general public. So I think that would be workable if we don't think of it in terms of a variance, but in terms of some sort of other special exception, special permit, you know, there's a number of different processes out there that doesn't give the City Council unbridled discretion, because there's, you know, otherwise it might be, can turn to be arbitrary and capricious your decisions. But nevertheless, some discretion based on the circumstances of that particular case.
So what, how would that differ from Mitchell, from a planned development? How would that differ than somebody, what is the minimum lot size for a planned development?
Currently, it's one acre.
So it'd almost be something like a consideration of a planned development, but with even more...
It could be. It just provides for more certainty for a developer if we outlined the, the rules of the game ahead of time. And then if that's still not sufficient for a developer, they could then come back in for the unique planned development aspects.
Gary had his hand up, and then they did, and then back to you.
The community is sensitive to this issue, and there's the, the, the various myth buildings going on that happens because of people getting excited and emotional about this. But I think as, as a council, we have to get our arms around this gorilla to some extent so that we don't have, at this point in time, somebody can go into a minimum lot and, in this area, and they can build a 50-foot monolith.
We're not, we can't take that away either.
And we can't take that away at this point in time. So we have to go forward, I believe, with, with something on the order that Mitchell is, is suggesting, so that we have setbacks and we have architectural appropriate designs and so forth, so that the developer can say, okay, these are the rules, and then if he wants to have that extra couple, but he still has that option. But if we do nothing right now, there's also the guy that can turn around and he could take, he could come into Market Center with that piece of acreage that we show and build a mini version of the merchandise mart in Chicago, which is nothing more than a square building. And not a pretty square building with a lot of square feet. He could do that. I'm not saying that anybody's proposing to do that now, but he could do that. So if we don't move forward now, we are not protecting the sensitivity of our citizenship. So we need to come to those terms. I believe we need to give direction to Mitchell and the urban design people to say, okay, we want this minimum criteria, and if they come up with other criteria, which I know they will, I have full confidence in them, from a creative standpoint, that would also be beneficial to what we want to accomplish in general, then we should go forward. And so I just threw out a, a, a height there based on an arbitrary, if it's 70 feet, it's 70 feet. That's not the, the biggest motivation I have that, that we need to deal with today from my perspective, but we do need to deal and stop talking and go forward with urban design to develop the criteria so that we can protect our community in the future from somebody doing something that was really a kiss with two, two S's. Then if that were to ever happen, that is shame on us.
Jaha, then back to Nancy.
I, I like around 80 feet as a number, and with, with this, one thing we have to express to our residents is that we don't live in a vacuum, though we like to believe we do. With Sunseeker going up and, and also Murdock Village going up, we still have to define ourselves as something, or we can lose what we have. It's very, very, very easy to lose our, our downtown over that. And, and thing is, we, and see, if, if, if our urban design staff does what they do, we will have a code which will accentuate what Puntagordo actually is, and so we will be different from what is over there, and therefore will patronize us rather than necessarily all of it going to them, because we're, we're acting as if we are the, we're the only sole thing in the county as we've been for the last 130 years. We're not. We have several things going up, and we have to think also about maintaining our downtown, sustainability of that. Two, two things, I have a lot of people come to me about developments in the Stark District, and the two things which harm, harmed every single time are, there's two factors. One, this 50-foot building height thing is, is a killer because of the cost of land when you get to the center, center. The second thing, which, which I'm saying, because I, I think this needs to be in a discussion, is the fact that if someone's building, they have to have this, the two-story, and the second story can't simply be a facade. The fact that they have to actually build a, a usable second floor requires people to build, do a two-story building for a one-story use, and that's also a problem, and I find those, these are the two biggest problems we have in terms of really with our infill, and I think that we need to address this, because the deal is, when it comes to our downtown, we have to have a critical mass of activity to sustain what we have. We, right, right now, we're just rolling dice and hoping people can survive during the summer, and, and we need, there needs to be enough activity that supports what's happening in the downtown. I think it's our responsibility to take better care of our people than we're doing right
I'm not sure I am at, would be at the 84 feet that Gary talks about, but I think doing something that would prevent another 50-foot tall, big block and start stepping back, so start stepping back earlier, so if you want to gain an extra 10 feet, then you have to step back at a point. So I think we need to, it needs to start stepping back early, and I, having some kind of a, of process that would give us some type of oversight would be, in my opinion, favorable. But I, I know historically, we had something where it was a, a particular point of like the, the hotel... It was just a point of the hotel, it was not the habitable space of the hotel.
But it's seven floor, it was seven stories.
It was, but they did, it wasn't really habitable up quite that high.
Not at a hundred feet, but, but in the eighties, yes.
So, and it was very small at that point in time. I mean, that, that particular area was really small.
It was a gigantic hotel.
So, I realize that, but not all of the hotel was that high. So, anyway, I, I still think that we need to be very careful about this.
You just said we need to stop talking, you put your hand up again.
I have a question to ask Austin.
Well, let's finish the discussion and then...
Well, it, it's relative to this question, it's a proposal that I have. Rather than, we're not engineers, we're not architects up here, and we're talking about setting a height. Maybe a, a compromise that we could make today, because I'm not very married to eighty-four feet, is that we direct urban design, we direct Mitchell and his, and his group to come back to us with a recommendation between seventy-six and eighty-four feet.
I'm okay with eighty-four as a starting point. We just need to start somewhere.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's, I'm just trying to get us off, off the gate there. And then, work with us because Mitchell has a better idea of what is really doable in increments.
That's what he just presented.
Yeah, I understand it, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get us to go forward.
I move that we do eighty-four feet.
I'm not done talking. We've got to talking. I'm not okay with eighty-four feet at all. The last couple of conversations we had about this, we agreed that seventy was gonna be the number, the magic number. Yes, we did. Oh, yes, we did, we did. And that was the last conversation that we had as a council, as this council, since I've been on this council. So, I'm just, I'm, eighty-four feet is, is going to have massive outcry in the community. I am totally not in favor of that. I, I'm happy to work with, with the city and, and work with the architectural design on some of these buildings that may wanna come into our city, but eighty-four feet is just not, it doesn't work for me at all, and I would not support that.
Land costs, the minimum, the bottom, bottom could be seventy-five, but really, eighty's just a safer number to say to work with. But again, and the reason why I mentioned Tokyo was because, the whole point in me saying this is because I could tell you honestly, I did, I could not see the height of the building when, when, when you have a...
Not Tokyo.
Yeah, but, no, you're missing, you're not hearing it, it's not, it could be anywhere, it could be on the moon. That's not, what I'm, what I'm saying is that if it's designed architecturally so that your eyes are on the street level, if it's four extra feet, ten extra feet, you can't see it anyway because your eyes are here. And the point is, if we did have, say, eighty-four-foot building, you won't see eighty-four-foot building because if it's designed right, you're gonna see this direction. But I'm telling you, this is, I've lived this, this is, you won't see that building if it's designed properly.
I still don't like it.
Okay. So...
I make a motion that we do eighty-four feet for direction for now, and Mitchell give us a param, you know, give us an ordinance.
So, what we want is, we want a draft ordinance to come back to us first before we send it to planning?
Yes. And then, then we can vote with intelligence. If we have this, then he can give us what it looks like, and then from that point, we, we can decide if we need to bring it down more feet or go up, that kind of thing.
Okay, so we have a motion?
A second.
And we have a second.
Can, as part of the discussion, is it eighty-four feet absolute max? With the exception of, of the elevator?
Like he...
Do you, do you want to include in that eighty-four feet?
The base floor.
Maybe twenty-four feet, I'm not twenty-four, sixty-four feet by right with up to eighty-four feet through the process that we were talking about?
I think they need seventy-five. I would say seventy-five plus the base flood aspect, that's why we're saying that.
I'm just simply asking, do you want to have built in a process where there's an absolute max, but, but below that, there's also a, a, a lower number by right, and in order to get to the absolute max, you have to come before the City Council through a special exception?
But I'm saying that lower number's gonna have to be seventy-five then because for, for, for a developer to look at it as viable, they've gotta have that security, they can't be rolling dice like they're doing now.
The numbers don't mean anything to me, I'm just wondering, you know, do you want to include in that...
I see what he's saying.
A process where you have a certain amount by right, up to an absolute maximum?
Right now, you have fifty feet by right, and I just think that anything over that...
And that's, and that's, I mean, that, that's fine, fifty feet by right, eighty-four feet subject to a special exception.
I, I would go with what we're going at now, only say this because the way that Mitchell's designed this already, maybe only one or two lots could even go that high. Because the way he's designed it, you can't go to that high on but this much of the downtown.
Well, and that's one of the questions I have, is what's the minimum lot size that you would need to have in order for any of this conversation to apply? Because I've had somebody show me something that was on a very small piece of property, and it was seven stories tall and ninety feet.
Yes.
And, and it's like, small piece of property, and would be totally out of scale. And I think the scale of, of our community is critically important. The critical, I mean, it's, the scale is, that's part of the character.
Yes. In earlier drafts of this presentation, we discussed various parameters for lot size, and it was recommended by staff that anything above five stories would require a half a block, essentially. So, half a block would be well over an acre, approaching two acres on even the smallest blocks in the city, which are two-hundred by four-hundred. So, you're talking a big parcel.
Yeah, yeah, because I think part of...
That would have to be written into this.
Okay, well, yes.
We would write it in.
That's what they do, that's the whole point.
So, what was your motion?
The motion is, is, is eighty-four feet.
Do we have to withdraw my motion?
No, we're just discussing it because...
Just an ordinance to use eighty-four feet as the maximum height for the point of giving us an ordinance that we can then come back to us. Because it'll include all these things, like, because see, I'm, I'm working also off of the past presentation, so that's, that's the question. Like, in, in my mind, when I'm looking at this height, I know that most of downtown can't go that high because of the fact he said of the limitations of the lot size. And so, I'm working kind of off the past.